This meeting to order today is Saturday, March 15th, 2014. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Here.
Counselor Camardo?
Here.
Counselor Cluddy?
Here.
Mayor Quill? Here. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And you remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Counsel, with your permission, I'd just like to waive the remaining portion till we get down to other business. Move along with our meeting. No dissent. So we'll start out with Mr. Selby. Do you want to start it out with Municipal Utilities, sir?
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, this is a continuation of the department presentations. In addition, I want to mention, we put a calendar of the budget in front of you where how we're going to try to roll this out, trying to get it done as early as we can. And you also have a sheet that shows the line item breakouts where we've tried to put a better description into each of these line items, for example, furniture and fixtures, office equipment and other equipment, in an effort to be consistent across departments. So this is something the comptroller has issued, and I thought you might find it interesting because we, as a result of this, some things have gotten moved into their line items. With that, I'll ask Vicki Murphy, our Director of Municipal Utilities, to present.
Good morning. On your desk, you'll find an updated presentation than when I sent you. Our computers went down that day. A lot of things didn't get filled in in time. The first is just the total city budget, and you'll see the ones that are broken out are the enterprise funds. And I'm going to be talking about the sewer fund, water fund, and the power utility fund, and a little itty-bitty piece, the solid waste fund, and that'll be the first part here. So the first slide is the methane gas utilities, and this portion is of the solid waste. This is a small portion of the solid waste. Our staffing is just one full-time equivalent employee. It's a building maintenance mechanic, and then some support from staff at the sewage treatment plant. And I just wrote a couple of things that they do here, and they balance the gas wells. They maintain the wells, they repair them, they monitor them, et cetera. And then the meat of it.
Mayor, excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Would you mind introducing, you brought--
Yes.
--you didn't bring them, they came on their own.
Some of my staff are here today. There's Mark Storres, he's our chief mechanic at the wastewater treatment plant, but he also helps out at the well field and the generation plant. We have Sam Granato, he's our operator in training, just became an operator. And then we have our chief operator, Jeff Sikora, sitting over here on my--
Thank you.
Right, thank you. So this is the methane gas utilities budget. The salaries is, that's the one full-time equivalent mechanic. Overtime, we upped that from what we actually spent in '12 and '13. There's been a lot of overtime this year because the wells were, they watered out, and the generation plant went off several times, so they came in for that. Other equipment, we asked, last year we got 2,500, we're only asking for 15 this year. Operating supplies, 2,500. Gas, after talking to Mark, we do use gas down there, so we don't know why it wasn't on the actual budget from last year, but we put 1,000 in that. And electric, we had 25,000 last year, and looking at what we did for last year, we decided 20 would be plenty. And then the services, you can read through those, but that came to less than what we asked for last year. I should remind you, though, that there is some uncertainties in this budget, only because there's going to be different people operating the generation facility, and the more that they run different engines, like one or two, then that's more work for these guys having to go out in the field and balance those wells, so.
I've got a question.
Please.
Can I ask as we go? When you say services, are these, this budget line are, is what we pay others to do work?
Exactly, yeah. And then the rest is the, I have no control over that unless we don't have people, then of course there wouldn't be any of that, so. Any questions on the methane? And is this okay? You want me to go through line by line, or just go through the totals of each, and then you can ask questions?
Counsel?
I'm fine with what she's doing, kind of highlighting--
Okay, some of, the others are a little bit more, there's more to them, so that's why I'm asking. This is a simple one.
It's our first, I don't know, it's up to Terry.
Why don't I give the totals of each lot of the different, like, operating supplies? And then if you want to ask what's in that, then just stop me. The next is the water fund, and I marked and read the ones that we have control over. I won't be talking about transmission and distribution. Mike Talbot probably talked to you on Thursday about that, so I won't be talking about that. Utility billing, there's one account clerk, half of a count keyboard specialist, one meter backflow coordinator, and half of a laborer. Those last two came into this budget last year. They used to be in the transmission and distribution budget. We put them here because utility billing, the total budget, half of it's paid for by the sewer fund, which it should be, because they also rely on those utility bills to pay, to get their revenues. So that's why we added those two, because then those people will also be seen in part of the sewer fund.
And this is the water, when we talk utility billing, in City Hall, it's the water billing department? That's the people that work downstairs?
Yep.
Okay.
So some of the operations they do, I just spelled them out there. There's lots more, but I didn't want to make this too cumbersome for you. If you want them, I can have them, give me every detail that they do.
Vicki, with these meter readers, I don't see the correct term here, so, would they change over to the different water meters? Is that, how much is that going to be affected?
I think it will be. There'll still be some that have to be read while we change those last, probably 3,000 out. The touchpad ones will still have to be done. And because we're behind, and that's why we, part of the reason why we're doing the meter project, this person would then probably help the meter, the person that replaces meters and does all the meter work. So the meat of it, the next slide. And I apologize for the public, because I can't read that from here, and I can barely read what I have in front of me. But total salaries are 102, 876. That's, again, just the senior account clerk and the account clerk. I'm sorry, that's actually, I need to change this. That's the meter reader and the account clerk, and they're both full-time. Intemporary is the senior account clerk and the meter reader. Up above was the backflow coordinator meter person. We don't have any overtime in this department, that could change. Furniture and fixtures, I did put $200 in there. Some of the furniture in the office is getting pretty nasty, pretty bad. Office equipment, we have $100, it looks like. Office supplies, 3150. That's primarily the paper that we have, the special paper that we buy for that. Services, total is 4375. Training and professional development, 100. I'm expecting maybe some software training there for the new software we're getting. Postage is 17,000, and then the rest I don't really have control over. The pumping stations, staff, this is maintained by the filtration plant personnel and the city manager, and I talked about this breakout of this department and feel that it actually should be part of water filtration. I'll leave that up to counsel, but I'll explain, go through it like it was a separate account for today anyways. So they take the raw water, they pump it from Owasco Lake to the water filtration plant. They chlorinate, this pumping station, there is chlorination at the Owasco Lake intake, and then they pump it throughout the towns and city. So the next one is the actual budget for that, and there's no people, as you can see, although it is, you know, there is support from the filtration plant. Other equipment is $20,000, and I'm pretty sure I had numbers for these, but for some reason, they didn't show up in here. Operating supplies, 7,500. Last year, we got 10. Gas, last year, 750. We were asking for 500. Electric, last year, we had 180. We're asking for 150 based on '12, '13. Telephone, 900. Services, 40,800. Last year, we got 59,540. And then fuel, asking for the same. And the total is at the bottom there, 272. Two, I'm sorry, 220. Last year was 272.
I've got a quick question.
Yep.
In the services for the pumping station, you, did you say that these new numbers are, there's, where there was no dollar amount before, it's just because you've put something in now, or they're missing?
You mean the joint, the--
Yeah, any of those under services?
Yeah, we used to just give you a number. We actually brought them out this time to show you what they're-- And there may be other little things, so I may add a little bit to that, because it looks like we're way under where we were, or what we asked for last year, but when we tried to break it all out based on what we saw from the last couple of years.
So if I see 10,000, doesn't mean you didn't use 10,000 last year, it's just you've broken it out this year, okay?
Next one is water purification, and again, that's where we'd like to put the pumping stations is into this budget, but that's up to you. Our staffing is half of me and half of our senior clerk, chief water treatment plant operator. We have a maintenance mechanic, and then four water treatment operators. So there's a total of seven, and you can read what they do there, and there's a lot more, but I just broke out a few things there. Water purification, here's the budget. The salaries, looks like 414, 871.
Vicki, next time, can we make this a little bit bigger?
I think I'm going to have to. I can barely read it.
Challenge, I'm having--
And I've got good eyes, and I'm having a hard time. Temporary and part-time, if you don't know, Anthony does hire a lot of summer employees up there to do the sand filters. It's a very intense, manual intensive work, so he hires kids for that. Overtime, because we're short-staffed up there, we always run into lots of overtime, so I kept it at the 37. Anytime somebody takes vacation, and I have a staff up there that's been with the city for quite a while, so they have a lot of vacation, and so I have to let them take it. When they take it, I have to backfill with another person, it has to be manned 24/7. Vehicles, you'll see here, I have 14,000 in there. That's actually half a truck. The other half, Debbie's looking, the other half will be, we're proposing put into the hydro budget, because it's used for both, because these guys man both of these operations. Other equipment, I've broken that all out, but it comes up to 21,500, and last year, we had 25. Office supplies, looks like 300. And then operating supplies, this is mostly chemicals. That's 169, I believe. Last year, it was 213, 700. The next page. Gas, 17,500. Electric, 50. Services, and we broke it all out, and that came to 82, 850. Last year, we had it at 95. And again, we may need to put a little bit, I mean, we tried to break it out, but there's always stuff we, or the little off things that we didn't see, because they were under $500. Fees, this is the laboratory fees, and we also had that, remember the watershed inspection? We pay for that out of this fund, so you'll see that big chunk there.
It comes out of the water, this fund here?
Yep. Training and professional development. These guys have to, to be able to keep their licenses, they have to have, I believe, 30 credit hours every three years, and if Anthony was here, he could tell you for sure, but I think that's what it is. Fuel, 5,000. Vehicle repairs and maintenance, we have 1,000 in there, and then the rest, I don't have control over.
Vicki, this is the, where our, it's funded by our water rates?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the water fund is the, the total fund, you'll see where the revenue comes into that. And then, and I need to caution that there's also part of that is, you know, the, which you won't see in my budgets, is the capital stuff, so.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
So I added this, and I don't know, I don't think it was in your first ones, maybe it was. I think it was, John showed it to me. But it shows the expenditures and revenues, and you can see that in '12, '13, our revenues were over what we spent. This year, we're at, for revenues, we're at 2,347. That's today. I didn't get the expenditures, I probably need to get with Laura for those numbers. There's some stuff in there, and I showed John earlier, stuff like unallocated insurances, judgments and settlements, stuff that I need her help getting that stuff, so you won't see it. The next slide actually shows--
Vicki, I just can, just before you--
Yep.
--go forward, I just wanted to point out that the revenues exceeded the expenditures for the year 2013, or '12, '13 by $420,000.
Yep.
So I think we're doing very well on that.
But these expenditures, I caution you, don't take in quite all of, and Laura could probably tell you where all the capital fund, it does show debt, the debts payment, but there's, as you know, the bands and stuff, I don't, that's not included in that stuff.
Right, I'm talking about just the budgetary, the revenue side and the expenditure side for last year, which was very good.
Vicki, before you go on, state dam is a shared operational cost, too.
Yes. Half of all, state dam comes out of the water fund.
Which part of the fund? Is it in the water filtration, or?
You'll see it only broke out, and go back to that slide that showed the beginning there of water, like this one on sewer. And that doesn't even show the, if I can find it, hang on. It shows debt service and bond anticipation notes in there, but it's in the total water fund, it's not in the operating budgets.
Vicki, who'd you say that was shared with?
It's shared with the general fund.
The general fund.
We consider that to be roughly half water supply, because it controls lake level and the ability to divert water into the system, and half of general fund.
Yeah, the rest of them, the dams at Mill Street and North Division are charged to the power, the E-fund. This one isn't, because it doesn't generate power, so half general, half water. Next slide is the sewer fund. I'm going to be talking about just the sewage treatment. Mike Talbot talked to you about the sanitary service, but like I was saying in the other, there's a lot of other costs in there, that's why I didn't do the expenditures, and I don't know where they are. This is what was budgeted for the year, and so, like I said, I probably have to get some help from Laura on that, find out how to do that on Munis. Sewage treatment is manned by, hang on. Half of me and half of the clerk, again. We have our chief wastewater treatment operator, Jeff's here. Senior building maintenance mechanic, that's Mark. We have another building maintenance mechanic, and I, this is kind of, there's two, actually, but one, they, the two of them share, they also help out at the wells and the generation plant. So sewage pays for one of them, and the well field pays for the other one, but they help each other at both areas. Operator two, and this is also our industrial pretreatment coordinator. We used to do this through engineering, now we have somebody that can do this, and he also operates the plant. And then our trainee is here, Sam. We have one lab technician, and we have seven attendants. And again, it's run seven, you know, seven days a week, 24 hours a day. And at the side here, you can see what we do there regularly on a day-to-day basis. The next is its actual budget. Here comes the eye chart again, sorry. The salary and longevity, 329, 388. I'm sorry, the total, I apologize, is 710, 842. I'll jump down to, we don't have any temporary, part-time, overtime. We're going to put that at 15. We hope it's a little better this year. We had a very, as you all know, a lot of storms this last year, and it requires extra staffing when we get the storms. Our overflow retention facility also is not online totally because of all the construction. That's what that consent order work was being done this year, so we had to call in extra people for that. Furniture fixtures, we put 1,000 in there. It says carpet, and I'm not going to talk about the carpet, but anyways, you can come down and look, but. Office equipment, we put money in there for two computers. One of them's mine, and the other one is, I believe, Jeff's, I'm not sure, I'd have to ask Carol. And then vehicles, our pickup trucks, we did, we are asking for another, it still runs, it's just, Mark, was it a 90? 1992? Pickup, or is it newer than that? 83? Oh, 2003, I'm sorry.
83? Oh, my God.
Okay. Office equipment, and the next one, I'm sorry, other equipment, apologize. We broke it all out. Last year, we got 125,000. This year, we're asking for 158, and we can definitely look at these numbers and try and get them closer to the, what we, and these are what we think it's going to cost, we can get better numbers.
Vicki, what's the biggest, it's about a $35,000, a $33,000 jump, what's the--
I'm sorry, what?
It's approximately $33,000 more than last year?
Yeah.
If I'm reading this correct, if I can see it. What's the biggest reason for that?
I'm going to say it's, we have to supply the belt press with new parts. We got some new equipment, but with that, it was all the spare parts that we're going to have to go with that. And then once it's, once it's there, then we won't have to buy it again, but, and I'd ask Mark for some help here. Let's see the, it wouldn't be anything like the UV, because that's been upgraded. I do think we're putting new chains in the grit tanks this year, and that costs money. Last time, and this is, came right from, and I got data from like three years past, but it looks like that one item, $7,500. And again, we can, we'll look at these numbers for our next--
But you're, if I understand you correctly, this is probably a one-time bump like this because of--
We got a lot of new equipment, and thank you for that, and we hope everything will run more efficiently because of that, but we need to put the spare parts on the shelf for it. Office supplies, we're keeping that at 300. Operating supplies and materials, we have 171,500, and I looked at what we spent, so we've come down quite a bit on that one. We had, gave us 240 last year, so. Natural gas, we put 100 in there because we've heard and we've seen, the price has gone up like 20, 30% for natural gas, so. Electric, that, as you know, we pay the electric generation facility right now, and for now, that's the way we are, we assume that's going to continue. I know some things are happening up there. We also do pay NISIG for when they're down, so that's included in this, too. And I see we spent a lot more last year, but we're hoping with the efficiencies of the new equipment that this will be back down to the 370. Telephone, other utilities, this is primarily water. We pay for our water here, and it, the biggest chunk of this is the water. And Anthony won't give me a break, so. Services, we're at 358. Last year, we had 398. The biggest one is the sludge, and that's gone down over the last couple of years, so that's improved, mostly because we're taking some to our own, but he charges me, too, believe me, so. Fees, this is primarily our permits, our speedy's permit, stuff like that, tank registrations. Training, these guys, the operators, have to have 60 credit hours, or is it 80?
For three operators, 60.
80 for Jeff. And every five years? Every five years, so there's a lot of training that they have to get. And we can break that out if you need to see it, and we've got one person that's, I'm working on his foray, so, and hopefully we'll get it soon. Fuel, 6,000, about what we've, you know, we've already spent more than half of what we asked for last year, so. Vehicle repairs and maintenance, if we keep the older vehicle, we left that at what we've spent, so. And then the rest, I don't have control over. The next slide, sorry. Expenditures in '12, '13 were less than what our revenues were, and of course, we adopt, when we do the adoption, we look at, we'll spend just as much as we brought in. So far, our revenues are 4,298, and that's like last week, so. So we're doing well there.
Another quick question, if I can.
Yes.
One of these budgets, you mentioned that you're working on a, through a consent order, that's required work that this, which--
That's sewer, and we're done with it. We got the letter from the D.C. that we are complete.
Okay, so if you, so your budget now is predicting everything's great, nothing surprise, no surprise?
Yeah.
But if you got another consent order, that could really tip things the other way.
Yes, it would mean we would have to do the work right away.
Right away, no matter--
Well, they give you time to do the engineering, and it's, I think with our sewer one was, I believe it was a year almost when it came, we had to put out a schedule of when we expected everything to be done. And then you have to meet that schedule, and then they go by that. Actually, there's one piece that isn't part of the actual consent order, but they recommended highly that we redo our SCADA system. That is not done. Matter of fact, you just bid on it, or, I'm sorry, you just, two weeks ago, I guess, chose the contractor, so that'll happen soon.
Okay, so when you do it, I mean, if you have to do the work, does that kind of eliminate all the, like, the nice choosing who you use, getting the best price, working--
Well, they give you time to, but not as much as you'd probably like.
Okay.
We had to have an engineer onboard, you know, within 30 days or something like that, or 60 days, I don't remember now, but they gave us a schedule, then when we saw their, then we had the engineer onboard, then he gives them the schedule, they have to approve it, and we go through that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes?
If we, if the scenario arises that the state gives us a consent order, could we bond for that as well? Or is there enough time to bond for--
Yeah, they, if, as long as it's in your schedule, that, you know, 60 days to bond, whatever it is, 90 days, whatever it is, as long as it's in your schedule, they understand that we don't have the cash. We were lucky with the sewer one, if you remember right, we did have some, we had, we had 3 million in our reserves, and we used that for the consent order. And we haven't spent it all, but we hope we don't, but that's what we use.
But that is not the case for our water fund?
No, we'd have to bond for that, yep. Any other questions? Our utility fund, and there's a lot of uncertainties here, so I put numbers in here, they are definitely, probably going to change. I'm going to just be talking about the hydroelectric services and the electric generation facility today. The rest is the stuff that I don't have control over, really. Bonded, I guess I sort of do debt, if I make sure we never have to do anything, we'll never have debt. Hydro staffed by, I put it, we, the, they pay back the water department 20% of his wages, because he maintains it, the maintenance mechanic. So that's in there, and I'll, the next slide will show some other stuff, because when we got the money for the hydro, we also said that we would staff it. Support from myself, Anthony, and the engineering department. Operate the plant, the power plants, maintain equipment, maintain property, and then comply with all the requirements. So hydro, as you know, the North Division Street Dam, hydro is down, and Mill Street's coming up. So there's some uncertainties here. When we took, when we got the money for the Mill Street Dam, part of that money said that we had to hire somebody, so I put a place marker here. I don't know if it's a labor, I don't know if it's a mechanic, but I put a place marker. I did not put any money in there, because I don't know what that'll be. Vehicles, here's the other half of that truck that Anthony would like to have. This is his big truck. Operating supplies and materials, we put spare, we put 1,000 in there. We're going to have to put spare parts for the Mill Street Dam. I expect this to be a little, quite a bit more than that. Electric, we left it because if the North Street, North Division Street Dam's down and the Mill Street's up, it should even out. I don't know if we're going to, you know, do improvements to the North Division and keep it down for the year, so, again, a lot of uncertainties here. I put numbers in, they're subject to change. Services, you'll just see engineering fees, relay testing, maintenance contract, that was the North Division, it should, it'll be Mill Street. Equipment rental, et cetera, that's the crane, and that was, I think he said that would be for two times if we needed it. And then I think there's even some fees here, but we didn't have them at the time I did this. The electric generation facility fund, again, a lot of uncertainties here. It's contracted right now, the staffing is, but we do support it. Mark and his people help out when they need to. They have to read equipment up there, stuff like that. I get the numbers, and give them to Laura to pay and stuff like that, so there's some support. Operate the plant to produce power, they maintain the facility, and they-- Operate the plant to produce power, they maintain the facility, and they report on the operations up there. The budget, again, I put numbers in there, but they're very uncertain on these. The supplies, we used to buy all the oil, and there's also some other stuff that we had to pay for up there. You'll see in twelve thirteen, it was about fifty-six thousand dollars we spent up there. I put sixty in here, but I don't know if the new people that are going to be running it will cover those costs or not, so we're leaving that for now. Natural gas, I didn't put anything in here, I don't know if we're going to run it, but if we're going to power the, the wastewater treatment plant, you're going to have to run natural gas. Methane gas, last year, we paid them ninety-four eight-six-three, so I put a hundred here. And then, electric, this'll change for sure, this is what we used to pay C.H. Auburn, or whoever they're called, Greenfield. I expect the cost here will be into services, because we'll call them the contract that covers the, and it'll be so much per kilowatt hour, so this'll probably go away, except for the NISIG to power back up when it's down, and it'll be a lot less, and then it'll go in, a lot of it'll go into services, but probably not this much, about half, maybe, something like that. So your total at the bottom is one point two, and again, I need to work on this with the city manager, and get a better, better idea of where these are, both of them. So total electric, and these are right off from UNICEF, and I'll, you'll see twelve thirteen, expenditures were one point eight, the revenues were three point two, there were some transfers in here, that's why your revenues are high. Expenditures, adopted this year, one point four, one point four. I did get in and get all the expenditures for this one, it's about one million right now, and, but I did just get another bill to pay, and that's eight hundred and seventy thousand every month. Revenues, this includes an eight hundred thousand dollar transfer, so it's less than that, it's one point six-ish somewhere, or one point four, so.
Where'd the transfer come from, Vicki?
I believe the general fund, am I correct? Yes, general fund.
Was this part of the, the two point five million that we moved out of the fund?
I think that was in the previous year. It was bud, it was budgeted for.
But that's part of the transfer?
It's not part of...
No?
It's not part of two point five, no.
This was on top of it?
Yes. And that's all I have for you today, unless there's questions.
Please buy a bigger printer.
The next one will be larger, I promise. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask, Laura, are you ready to come up next? Because we put you off last Thursday, so, I don't, I don't know if you guys discussed your sequencing, because you were not on the original agenda for today, so. Who's queued up next, John, or you?
Yeah. She's ready.
Okay.
With your permission, I'd like to go over the handout that I passed out instead of what I sent you last week, is that...
Sure, the one on our...
It's this one here, this, okay, yep, sure.
Which one is it?
The one with the staple, I guess, on the side, right?
Yeah, the one that we had on our table.
Just so we all got the same one, it's the one with the arrow that's going for the part-time position, right? Okay, good.
All right, so my department is relatively small compared to some of the other ones. The mission of the finance department is to provide timely, accurate, useful information for citizens, staff, and elected officials, that will assist in making appropriate decisions. The comptroller's office does a lot of the processing of general journal entries, payables, paying our vendors, and the payroll, purchasing, and then, on the treasurer's side, is where we take in the money, the tax money, the fees, and whatnot, any money that comes in from the state, they process it. So what I've done is collapsed the treasurer's office, the comptroller's office, and the accounting office, because we all really work together to make the finance department work. If you look at the second page of your packet, you'll see on the bottom, the comptroller, the accounting, and the treasurer, and how those totals from the original ones I sent out agree to the total of this combined department, just so you know, you're, what you got before is very similar to what you're looking at, it's just condensed. Right now, we have myself, the comptroller, the city treasurer, a senior account clerk slash keyboard specialist, who works in the treasurer's office, another senior account clerk who works in the treasurer's office, a clerk who works for both offices, handling a lot of just administrative duties. I have two senior account clerks in the comptroller's office, and a senior payroll account clerk. I also currently have the purchasing agent underneath me, who is part-time. She was cut back to part-time last year, and we've had a lot of difficulties with purchasing lately. She's only here two days a week, and that causes people sometimes to circumvent the system, if they can't get a purchase order quickly enough, they'll just go around the system and use a claim, and that's really not something we want to do, we want that purchasing officer to be able to look for the best price for our department. So while I don't believe that we need a full-time person, I think someone needs to be there more than two days a week to help improve our purchasing processes. I think that can only benefit the city in the long run. So you'll see our salaries, our salaries didn't go up much over the previous year, the only raises were for step raises and contractual longevity raises. And that arrow that you see, that goes from the senior count clerk down to the temporary and part-time, that's for, because the treasurer's office has a vacancy for a full-time person, we believe we can fill it with a part-time person, but we really need that part-time person. Right now, people are running up their comp time, they're being very, very understanding in taking comp time versus overtime, but they are taking, maxing out their comp time, which is seventy hours, and once they max out their comp time at seventy hours, we do have to pay them overtime. So a lot of them are reaching that limit, with the tax bills coming in in July, with only two people around, we're going to see more overtime if we aren't able to hire this part-time person. But we, we do think we can help the city out with some savings by using a part-time person instead of hiring another full-time person. Quality pay and overtime is very similar to the prior year. Our operating supplies are very department-specific, we need tax bills, stock for the payroll checks, stock for the claims checks, we have specific paper we have to use for health insurance bills, letterhead, we have the W-2 and the ten ninety-nine forms, it's all stuff that, it doesn't amount to a lot individually, but together, it adds up to a little bit, but it is very consistent with last year, we're not asking for any increases. On the next page, we have just minimal services that we need, some bank charges for wires and whatnot, the alarm service, because we need to make sure that our records and our employees' information is protected. When you look at the fees line, both Bob and I are CPAs, and we have licenses that are renewable every couple of years. There's also different associations that we are affiliated with, to make sure that we have current information on what's going on in the accounting world, so that we can comply with all the regulations. And then, there's some bond costs in there, it does cost money to go out to bond, we have great bond counsel. In our consulting fees line, we have the financial statement audit, which is required by New York State. We have some consulting fees, which I'm hopeful won't be this high this year, this is where Lisa was coming in to help us last year. We also have the GASB forty-five reevaluation, that is a requirement, we have to get that done every two years.
All right, and we talked about this when we met with the audit committee, can you explain just a little bit about that reevaluation, you know?
Sure. A, a report is good for two years, but what GASB forty-five is, is it's an actuarial valuation to determine the long-term costs related to your post-employment benefits, except for pension.
And you're talking about post benefits, you're talking about promissories that we made to our retirees for health insurance and for retirement?
Correct. Not the retirement cost, New York State takes care of that, but health insurance, dental insurance, stuff like that.
Right, right. And so, every two years, that's reeval, reevaluated for, to put a value on it?
Yes.
For long-term debt purposes?
Yep.
And I think we valued that, that it being, what, almost, I'm trying to remember now, was it a hundred million?
I don't think it's that high.
Or forty, forty-five million, it was, it was total aggregate, I think, was that, with the debt we had, I think that was forty-five million, was that, and our indebtedness was about sixty-seven million, so I think it was about a hundred, our total...
Oh, you're talking about total long-term, that sounds, that sounds close, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and then, our training and professional development, both Bob and myself are required to have forty hours of professional development a year. We have some money in here, it's not going to cover all of it, but it'll at least help out with the cost. There's also some UNICEF training that we like to send people to, to make sure that we can utilize our UNICEF system to the best of our abilities. There's some payroll and computery, computer and notary courses that are also included in these lines. So when you look at our budget, year over year, what we're requesting is only a two point six percent increase, and that's really just due to contractual increases in salaries. I did that percent before benefits, because you can't really, it's not really comparable. Does anyone have any questions on the finance department?
The, the assessors department, does that still fall under finance, or is it...
I left assessors separate.
Okay, fine, I just wanted to know if it...
That's the next page.
Gotcha.
In the assessors department, we have Mike Burns, our assessor, Fred, our assistant assessor, and Candy, the account clerk. They had a lot of overtime this year, but we don't expect that overtime next year. This year was a reevaluation year, where they went through and reevaluated the entire They also have some operating supplies that they need, nothing huge, about consistent with last year, it's department-specific items, film and processing, diskettes, items like that. They have a couple of services that they are mandated to have, their ARPA system is required, that's where they keep all of the real property. The CORPAS study, they need that to value businesses for when the businesses challenge their appraisal. And then, Marshall and Swift Manual, that's also mandated by the state, that's a cost value, a way to value properties at cost. In the fees section, they have renewals of their licenses. Oh, I'm sorry. So this was the first page that we just went over. At the bottom of this page, you'll see the grievance board, and the assessor's office has to staff that grievance board for people who want to contest their appraisals or assessments. The next page, the assessor's office also has required continuing professional education requirements, just like the CPAs do. Most of those are within New York, they try to keep it as local as possible. When Fred goes, he only asks for mileage, he doesn't ask for reimbursement for anything except for mileage. Fuel is, when they're out doing their appraisals or going, you know, they, they do drive around quite a bit, and then, repairs and maintenance for their, for that vehicle. So, does anyone have any questions on the assessor's office? I'm all set then, if anyone has any questions before me, if I'm done.
Next presentation's corporation counsel.
Good morning, everyone, and I don't have any slides, because mine is all on a spreadsheet that you have, and it would be difficult to put it up on the screen. However, as you all know, the corporation counsel's office is the general attorney for the city of Auburn, handles many diverse matters, all from dog cases in city court to very complicated sorcery cases. And it varies during the year as far as what the volume is, but as I get into the explanation, I can highlight what has occurred and what we anticipate is going to occur. One of the first items that you see is the budget for the rental of the city court facility. That is located at the historic post office, and while the city court, aptly named, is not a responsibility of the city, as far as the personnel is concerned, the state law mandates that, where there is a city court in a municipality, that that municipality be responsible for the rental space. Currently, we are in the middle of a lease with the county of Cuga, and that lease is good through December of twenty seventeen. Currently, and that lease is based, the payments are based on a calendar year, not a fiscal year, so that during the first part of the next fiscal year, the lease payments are approximately eighty-one hundred dollars a month, and after January, it'll go to about eighty-two hundred dollars. And as I say, it increases, the square foot rental increases twenty-five cents per square foot each succeeding year, so that that will rise again in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. So that, that's, and they bill us quarterly, and we are up to date on our payments as far as the county is concerned on the lease. The personnel in the office is composed of myself, as corporation counsel, one administrative assistant, and a part-time contractual assistant corporation counsel, Andy Fusco. In relation to our costs, they, they are the same as they were last year. One thing to recognize, and it is some savings, substantial savings to the city, is that I do not receive any medical or retirement benefits, because of my peculiar situation, I wouldn't say peculiar, my current situation, and Andy, as a contractor, does not receive any benefits either. So if that were a different situation, you'd be paying approximately forty percent more of the expenditures for my salary and his contractual payments, if he were on salary. Now, this was a... for my salary and his contractual payments, if he ran salary. Now, this was a, let me go into, the office supplies line, as you may see, is slightly increased because of litigation that we have encountered. There is built into that the cost that we have to pay for printed briefs. We have one case before the Court of Appeals, which is the Merry-Ground Playhouse assessment case, and their application for an exemption, which is now going to be heard sometime in the next couple of months before the Court of Appeals. And I will compliment Mr. Fusco that he reached out to both the Conference of Mayors and the Association of Towns and Counties, where they are going to provide and join into the lawsuit on our behalf as, by filing what they call amicus briefs. In other words, they are going to come in and substantiate our position as far as our contesting the exemption that has been granted to the Merry-Ground Playhouse for their apartment buildings. So that's going to happen in the near future. Now, the other problematical area is, are the services line, the lines, the expenditures. I have increased that in some of the categories for a couple of reasons. The first one being that we have incurred some substantial costs in reference to the lawsuits that have been brought against the city by the three or four drug stars. And we have had to pay, in this past fiscal year, monies that we did not budget it, for professional appraisers in these cases. We did receive some relief by the fact that Mr. Fusco did confer with both the city, the county, and city school district to join with us in paying some of the expenses that we've incurred as a result of these lawsuits. Currently, only one of those lawsuits have been heard by a court. These are special judges who have been assigned by the appellate division to hear hundreds of cases that have been brought by basically drug stars throughout our fourth judicial district, which is from our county west to Buffalo, and Canadian border down to the Pennsylvania border. There are, they have heard several cases, one of which was ours, but have not rendered a decision. When they're going to decide it, we don't know. It may be in this fiscal year, it may not. Dependent upon that decision, it will trigger whether or not we were going to go to full-scale hearings for the other three drug stars that are not part of the case that we argued as far as this city is concerned. So these, there are two judges assigned, and they will decide the case when they decide it. Once that happens, it will trigger other, will either, they'll either dictate that all of the other stores will get the same relief or decision based on what their criteria is, or we may have to try each one of them. I hope that we don't, but that's beyond our control. In my services line, excuse me, also, besides the biggest item right there, biggest item there right now, is Andy's contract, which is $4,500 per month. Now, I must supplement this year's budget request by some factors that we faced last year. As you know, we had the services of both the Bond Law Office and the Amagon Sanchez Office, the Bond Office, for various different matters, and we paid the Bond Office approximately $64,000 to date. Now, the greatest part of that, which this counsel is aware of and has experienced, is labor, and that is about $50,000. And that relates to, basically, the fire department negotiations, and there is, there were other expenditures of approximately $15,000, which are broken out to Bond Counsel. We get permit, DEC permit applications that are overseen by one of the attorneys at the Bond Office. And a big item, in excess of $10,000, was a payment to their specialty bankruptcy attorney. We had a case where a taxpayer was delinquent, over $200,000, and we were unable to proceed with the tax foreclosure because this individual either kept filing for bankruptcy, which puts an automatic stay on our ability to proceed with the tax foreclosure. And then the person would come out of bankruptcy, the minute we went after them, again, they went back to bankruptcy. Well, the specialized attorney was able to go to the bankruptcy court, contest the proceedings, and to have the judge lift the stay. And that caused the bankrupt person, or the person filing, to throw in the towel, went out and refinanced their property, and the city did recover $220,000, which was money well spent. But the rest of that was basically the labor negotiations and the labor litigation that have emanated from the fire department negotiations and the litigation that is still in progress, and this contract is not yet completed, as you know.
John, not to interrupt you, but you said Bond Office, you're talking about Bond Schenning and King.
Yeah, I mean, they've renamed, they have renamed from Bond Schenning and King to the Bond Law Office.
Bond Law Office. When we talk about Bond, we're talking about bonding attorney or whatever.
No, 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 no.
Just so people are clear, so Bond Law Office.
Yeah.
And that total amount was 64,000, 50 was for negotiations, and 15 for other procedures.
Yeah, I think that's pretty accurate, yes.
Thank you.
Now, just a caveat, and I've put 50,000 in there for next year, but two things to keep in mind, the fire is not yet completed. Whether it's going to go beyond July 1 into the next fiscal year, I don't know. If we end up in litigation or in the appellate division, that's still going to be open, and we are still going to be incurring cost on that contract. Also, as you know, the Police Department labor matter is ripe again, and negotiations haven't started, but remember that they are working under a two-year arbitrator's decision. When that decision was made, there was not a, an agreement on their contract, but what happened was that the arbitrator came in and set the stage, and that's what they've been working under for almost two years now. And arbitrator's decisions are only good for two years. So we have, the manager has given notice to the Police Department Union that we want to start negotiations, they've responded. I don't believe we have dates yet where we're going to be formally discussing with them, and I think on the manager's decision and recommendation, we'll decide whether or not we need outside counsel. The other matter that impacted this year's, and my services line went way over, in fact, my budget was out of money for most of the year, between the Bond Office and the Amagon Sanchez Office. As you know, the Amagon Office, Vince Sanchez, our consulting attorney on the Cogen plant, has been instrumental in, I would say, straightening out the problem that we have with the huge losses that we have incurred as a result of the operation of the Cogen plant. And he not, his background was such that he was involved personally in the cogeneration industry, and was well-aware, and has had contacts with other companies who will provide us with, who did provide us with an evaluation of the Cogen operation, whether or not it was feasible that the city should go forward and acquire it, and also to investigate and cost out what has occurred with the current owner. And that has resulted in Mr. Sanchez negotiating with Auburn Energy, and we have entered into a letter of intent, and we have a contract ready to be signed shortly, and we have bonded, and we will be acquiring the plant, I would say, within about the next 30 days or so. So their fees to date are, have been $48,500. That will not continue on to the next fiscal year unless something extraordinary occurs. I don't see that happening. One other item that is very important to be considered is the fact that we did do a reevaluation. And the last time we did that reevaluation, there were several cases which, in the form of the certiorari cases, that people have brought for litigation purposes. There are going to be residential matters that our office won't be involved in, and it's a more informal proceeding where a residential homeowner can go before a hearing officer and contest their assessments, and we have, the Assessor, the Assessor's Office will defend those because it's a matter of looking at appraisals rather than legal proceedings, per se. But our records indicate that the last time this took place, there were approximately eight very serious, substantial certiorari proceedings. We found that there was at least one manufacturing facility that contested their assessment, and one large commercial establishment. And what that means to us is that our office will defend that, defend those proceedings. However, it will require the engagement of professional appraisers, because it would be self-serving to have our own assessor issue the appraisal, and those appraisal fees can be quite substantial, could be in the neighborhood of, if we have eight, nine, 10, could be about $25,000 just for the appraisals. So I just give you that caveat, we don't know, it's speculative, and the money that I have put into next year's budget might be optimistic, but it's all speculative, and we don't want to load up the budget with monies we're not going to spend if we don't have to. But we may have to come before this council for budget, for transfers if our costs do exceed what we have budgeted. The only, the salaries, as I say, are staying the same. We try to minimize our supplies. I think we're going to need a brand-new printer. Our office printer is, is starting to show its age, and it's crinkling papers, it's not working properly. But outside of that, our major expense in supplies are the supplements that we need for our law books, which cost approximately $1,500 annually, and then we try to keep up to date on other legal matters, but we don't spend a great deal of money on them. And most of our continuing education, we try to attend seminars that are, like the Bond Office does run certain seminars on labor and other issues, and since we are a client, they only charge us $25 per person to go for half a day, and we try to take advantage of those, and take advantage of NICOM and any other organizations that can provide us with municipal matters that we're concerned with. The only other item to be considered, which is probably not going to be in next year's budget, is that the Human Resources Department has been underneath the Corporation Counsel's Office, but I believe that the manager is interested in moving that to either the manager's office or some other department. Doug, if you want to speak to that?
Yeah, that's correct. We really don't have a Human Resources Department, so that line item, we're just going to move the one person there into Central Services because that's largely what she does, is support CIT functions and some of the mandatory training functions, so I think it's misleading to say we have an HR department and an HR budget.
She does act as like the initial intake for matters that are, quotation marks, "human resources," and generally, the, our office does handle some of them, but that's a single person, and she, her main function is the IT functions. So that's really the entire presentation, and where we're at, and as I say, unfortunately, some of the matters that we are anticipating, that we will be dealing with, are speculative, but we'll have to, as they say, we'll have to deal with them as they arise. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Mr. Ross, excuse me.
Our last presentation today is from the City Clerk's Office.
There's a supplemental handout that I'm providing in addition to the spreadsheets that were in the packet. The first page there, front and back, is a compilation of the services that occur in the City Clerk's Office. The services that are provided in the Clerk's Office are pretty straightforward and pretty essential to a lot of individuals, matters such as marriage licenses, birth certificates, death certificates, things that are essential for those particular circumstances. The Clerk's Office also oversees the dog program, the enforcement, we just passed that contract last week, but the Clerk's Office itself handles a lot of the administration for the dog licensing, the violations, the dog warden issues, things like that. In addition, the Clerk's Office also oversees the licensing for bingos and games of chance. In addition, the Clerk's Office also oversees the licensing for bingos and games of chance. Another major topic of the Clerk's Office is the FOIL request, Freedom of Information requests that the city receives. And in my first two months, this is one of the areas that has kind of been eye-opening for me. It's definitely essential that we be able to provide the, you know, the important service of the freedom of, of responding to the Freedom of Information requests. However, it can be quite a time-consuming process. And it's, the Clerk's Office is technically the point of entry for those Freedom of Information requests. And then we will distribute them throughout the city organization. And I will say that everybody throughout the city is very cooperative and they take them very seriously. We usually do get good response and, but it is quite a time-consuming process. And I think if there's one area where it's been a kind of a learning experience for me is coming into the Clerk's Office and being here for a couple of months now, is the amount of time that is spent compiling the information for people for Freedom of Information is a, it does take quite a bit of time and a lot of it, a lot of the Freedom of Information requests that we get tax the time of the offices that are already stretched a little thin, mainly the codes office. Now, there's an awful lot of requests for people looking to purchase property and things like that. And a lot of them oftentimes are sent down to the codes office. But it is a time-consuming process, but it's another thing that's facilitated by the Clerk's Office. Records management for the city, in addition to the record of the council meetings, where the official place where all the records for the city are maintained. I do not know if everybody has had the chance to be up in the attic of City Hall. If you haven't, we could arrange for, to take you up there. But the attic here at City Hall is full of all of the records of the city for many years back and some of them longer. But we do have our part-time records retention clerk who mainly is in charge of that. And she handles what records need to go, what records need to be up there. And she's the main point of contact for people when records need to be researched. And there's an awful lot of requests for researching records every time somebody comes in front of our planning board or zoning board or maybe even some of these legal matters, will need to go and look for prior information. And she's the point of contact for that. In addition, all of the advertising for the city goes through the City Clerk's Office. So anytime that, pretty much, I think we've eliminated throughout the city discretionary, I'll call it discretionary advertising, that might be for like events or concerts or things like that. But it's pretty much the legal advertising that's required when, for example, when the city will pass bond ordinance, you'll need to list that notice in the paper. And every year at the, towards the end of the city budget year in May, June, we'll put out the big couple-page ad of the, of the tax information and things like that. Expenses for the elections are in the City Clerk's budget. The County Board of Elections runs the local elections. However, the city pays the money for the election workers and other expenses associated with getting machines to the polls, things like that. This year, it looks like there will be a June primary. However, if there isn't a June primary, that'll be good because we'll know in time for the final budget and we can save that $8,000 or whatever it'll be to fund a June primary. But the unfortunate thing about the way that the state is doing the primary situation right now is there could be a potential for three primaries. Fortunately, we don't have any local elections that should force a September primary. But in the event that we did, we would, if there was a June primary and a September primary, and then the general election, we'd be funding three elections. So right now, it looks like we might have to fund two elections. But if we don't have to fund that June primary, that'll be good because it can be money that's just taken out of the budget. And then the final thing is the city's website. The Clerk's Office is kind of the, is the administrative, the administrator of the city's website. And we're in the process, right now, of going through an upgrade so that we can integrate the Novus Agenda system and get that fully operational for the council and for the public. And the, there's actually a resolution this week on the agenda that will talk about one component of that upgrade. But the Clerk's Office, and then with some assistance too from Anna Hiloa in particular up at the city manager's office, and then other key people in many of the departments, there's many departments that have people that are assigned specifically for their website. The Clerk's Office just kind of oversees that network of people that are in charge of the city's website. And we're going to be beginning to embark on doing more with that, trying to use it as a tool for the city. To get to the spreadsheet specifically, this is, this will be really quick because the salaries, you have my position's salary in there as well as deputy clerks and the registrars, who's also a clerk, salary in there. And then separately, under the records line is the salary for our part-time records person. I realize I do not have any additional requests for staffing in here because of the fact that I'm very realistic about the situation that we are in as a city. However, it's definitely my opinion that the, the records person could be and probably should be a full-time position because of all the work that's required. And it's really a matter of if there, if the records person was a full-time position, we would be able to do more with that position. I think what we do right now is more limited and is essential to what absolutely needs to be done. And she's, works as hard as she can the three days that she's here to keep up with it. But I do believe that it is warranted that that would be a full-time position. I don't have that in here, but if there was ever going to be a time that we could talk about additions, that would be probably the one request I would have for staffing. The staffing also includes here a part-time bingo inspector. We do, there used to be years ago, a few years ago, there was two part-time bingo inspectors. There's now one time, one part-time bingo inspector. And what that person does is, it is responsible for checking the weekly bingo games that are out there in the city, as well as any of the bars or restaurants or stores that have any piece of equipment that could be considered a game of chance. So there is a list of about, I'm going to say it's probably about 35 or 40 places here in the city that do have those types of machines in them. And they do need to file and, for their annual license. And it's his job to go out and inspect that that occurs. Office supplies, there is, most of the office supplies that we need are, can come out of the central arrangement for office supplies. But there is some specific things to the department, such as paper, that the birth certificates and things need to go on, as well as some boxes for the storage of the records upstairs in the attic that are specific to the department. And then the supplemental spreadsheet that I handed out to you with my handout today breaks out the software and services lines, which is basically where all the miscellaneous expenses are contained in the office. And the new controller has asked us to break these things down and has created this new software and software maintenance line, which is going to be line number 409. Half of the services line for the City Clerk's Office has to do with computer software that allows us to communicate with the state on licensing issues, the record-keeping of the birth certificates and death certificates. The city's website is budgeted and the, and the hosting and servicing of the city's website is in here, as well as the, the update of the city code. And that's done through a software company and a software program as well. And then the new Novus Agenda program, which will have an annual expense to it, is in this budget as well. But I can tell you that the long-term benefit that we're going to see to that Novus Agenda program is, there's, it's really, we're only beginning to use that software. And once, once we fully integrate that software through the program, it's really a much more efficient process of putting the council meeting agendas together. And it could be used for planning board meetings, zoning board meetings, other boards and commissions as well. I mean, there's, there's a lot that can be done with that. So we're just at the beginning of that process. The other major expense in the services line there is for the advertising. And like I said, that's the required advertising that takes place in, throughout the city. Then the benefits now are included in the specific budget. So I know that Councilor Camardo was asking last Thursday night at the last meeting about the difference in expenses. The services line in the budget year that we're in right now has a lot more money in it. And that was budgeted by the council for the implementation and the bringing in of the Novus Agenda program and everything, all the expenses that were going to be associated with that. So those expenses will turn into annual expenses of the program, but will be much less than what was budgeted this year. So the total line for software and services will, will decrease significantly. And if you take out the money for the, if you, if you account for that and then do the math on the benefits that are now in here, it's a, the city's clerk's budget will be down by about $75,000, just due to the fact that there was some one-time service expenses budgeted in there. So what'll happen is between now and the next six weeks, we'll have more of an exact number. It's not going to change a lot, but it might change by a few thousand dollars, most likely. Some of these software programs and stuff, we'll know, once we, council's going to make a decision on one of them this week, once we know the exact prices. When we come back with the manager's budget a few weeks from now, there'll be more exact and it might reduce those services lines by a few thousand dollars more. Does anybody have any questions about the budget? If not, I did have one more thing I was going to show you. Anybody have any questions about the budget? If not, I was going to just go over the website. This should open right up. This is the, what's going to hopefully come up, is the city's current website. As I said, we're, we're going to be, over the next couple of months, finishing up the upgrade to the website. And we are going to give the homepage here a new look. And it's going to, the, what's driving the upgrade is the work that we need to do to integrate the Novus Agenda program into this site. So we're going to take the time to, we're going to give the homepage here a new look. But we're also, we've asked each department to go through the city website and do an audit and review of their particular pages and get everything up to date and get all the information accurate. So that when we go out with the new look of the website in a couple of months from now, which will have that Novus Agenda information in there, everything will be up to date and it'll be a great, consistent, up-to-date tool for the public. One thing that I added here, and I just want to show it to you, and what we will do from the beginning of this week here, Monday, once I get it all completely updated, is we'll keep this, as you go through this budget process, I've added this City Budget Central page to the website. And I'll open that up right now. Right here on the left side, the top tab, call it City Budget Central. And if you go there, right there, it's got, it'll have a lot of information to explain to the public where the council is at in the budget process. And then at the bottom, I'll scroll down. I ran out of time when I was putting this together yesterday, but I'll have it all up to date on Monday. At the bottom is where I will list each department's presentations as they give, present them to the council here publicly so that the documents are available to the public, for the public's consumption as well as the council's consumption. So if anybody has any thoughts or ideas to add to this page, but what I'll do on Monday too is I'll update it with the manager's, manager presented you today with the complete budget timeline, so I'll get that on there on Monday as well.
I think that's a good idea, that the public is informed, well-informed on what we're discussing and they have documents in front of them that they can refer back to. So that's a good idea, Chuck, and I commend you for doing that.
I agree with Councilor, this is, this is something much needed. But as we get past the adoption of the budget, is that going to become something different? Is that, or is that always going to remain as that? Or we're going to have maybe the topic of the, of the season or something?
Yeah, when we, one of the things that we're, one of the goals that we have for the upgrade of the homepage is to make it more user-friendly and easier to navigate. And so the mayor's answer is yes. There's going to be, one of the things that we're going to build into the new website is some tools, some little bulletin board features and newsletter features that we can keep the public up to date on current topics. So what, you know, each, you know, what we'll do this budget season for the next four months is this page, this will be the page that people can, people in the public can go to. We'll keep this updated day-to-day on where you, where the council is at with the budget. And then, you know, once the budget's adopted in June, probably leave this page up for a few weeks while it's still timely and then it turns into something else.
There should, once, in my mind, once the budget is adopted, that should be somewhere that's accessible.
Yep.
And I know it's a lot of work, but it, would it be possible to track each department on a quarterly or a monthly period?
Well, the monthly budget reports that come to council get posted to the, in the agenda packets to the website. But we can, we can work that in as well.
And Councilor Cook? Yeah, I just wanted to commend you. I agree with Councilor Camardo and Mayor Quill that having the, this budget central, City Budget Central is like a, you know, a beginning link for, for the people of Auburn to access. I commend the idea. It's, it's, what I think it does is it shows that we're, we're presenting the public with real-time information or as quickly or present as we can as a city. And also, it's, it, it, it's, shows the transparency of the, of the city of Auburn to the people so that they can be informed and, again, guide us as to what, what we should be doing as a city council.
Thank you. The, on Thursday night, when we talk a little bit more with the resolution that's on, I'll, I'm going to show you real quick an example. Once we put that, once that Novus program is integrated and up, that Novus program opens everything up for the public. So every, everything that's in your packet is in the public's packet, once that Novus Agenda, and in a very user-friendly way. And it's, you know, it's, it's going to really be a huge step forward in opening things up to the public once we fully integrate that. So, but thank you. In the meantime, we'll keep this updated while you go through this budget process.
Anything else from Mr. Mason? I couldn't hear your name, sorry.
Sorry.
Counsel, I believe that, Mr. Selby, I believe that is our last presentation for the schedule?
That is, for today.
Counsel, it's your turn. Anything on our other business? Counselor McCormick, please.
Could we talk about the timeline?
Could, could, could you speak a little bit louder, please?
Yes. Could we talk about the timeline? It's, the dates, are these city council meeting dates, or is this just in general, the timeline?
For the most part, these are city council dates.
Okay.
Thursdays.
Well, that's what I, the reason I asked was, I think, I was looking at my calendar, just to be sure, these are dates that we want to be meeting. I got April, April 5th, and I don't mind, April 5th is a Saturday. Is that okay with everyone?
That's your deadline.
That's our deadline?
Yeah, so if you, what basically, I think what he's saying there is that if you've got input for, to have it hit to him by April 5th.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry.
Some of these are not council dates, but they're just deadline dates that we've set in.
Deadlines to have things to do.
Try to stay on schedule.
Okay, so our next meeting is the 20th. That's Thursday, then Saturday. Then you want us to give you our input based on what we've learned in the last few weeks?
Yeah, and I'm taking notes as these presentations are made. But yeah, we'd like to do that. And then what we'll do is assemble everything. As of that point in time, I'll start doing some cutting. We'll have an internal draft to the council by the 18th. And we don't want to make that public. That's still a very fluid working document. Get additional council input, and then I'll draft a budget proposal to the council on May 1st.
Okay. What my, I guess my head is saying, if all five of us give you our input and it's, takes you in five different directions, how is that going to work? Would it be better? I don't know what's better, but is that what you're hoping we'll do, is just all independently give you our thoughts?
I'm hoping as a result of these presentations, these meetings, that there's a little bit of deliberation all along the way. And hopefully consensus is reached along, along the way. It's, it's too early right now because you don't know the revenue projections. So we haven't defined the gap for you in terms of how much we're going to need to cut.
Okay.
But I think through the process, what I was hoping is that every time we talk about an item, we try to reach some conclusion. That gets incorporated in the, in the preliminary budget I submit. After which, you know, I put some time in here for at least two additional sessions with the council and finding everything. And then have a public hearing in early June and an adoption prior to the end of the month.
Okay, that's good to know. Because I, I think so, as we go along, like when we get to the, especially the revenue part, there's ideas I'm sure everybody has or questions, suggestions. We should talk about them here and at a meeting and not send them to you. I, I just thought that would be very difficult to manage. So I just wanted to be sure, because this is my first, although I have been here on the other side. But just to make sure we all were on the same page as far as the process goes, all of us. So we're going to talk about this as we go along.
Deliberate during council session, correct?
I think that's what we're saying. Does that sound good to everybody?
Can I, can I twist that just a little bit, Counselor? And this is what I, what we've done in the past. We've had a drop-dead date for council where all proposals should be made and then voted on by the majority of the council. So that's, it, it has worked in the past, but it doesn't prolong it much longer. So I'm going to ask this question. May 15th and 22nd, they are Thursdays, I am assuming?
Yes.
They are? So probably the first Saturday after the 22nd will be the 24th, I believe. Could we have a special session or a special meeting of council? No?
I won't be here.
You won't be here? Okay. I'd like Counselor to work it out with Mr. Selby. Sometime as quickly after the 22nd and before June 5th. Counselor, you'll be out of, out of town, I'm assuming. So we've got to come up with a date where it's a drop-dead date, where everyone has their proposals in. We can discuss it as a group and then no other things will be accepted unless by a majority of council.
Could we move that drop-dead date up? I mean, we've got.
You have Thursday, the 29th there, between the 22nd and the 5th. You have that additional Thursday that's on the calendar. You could make it that night.
Does, let me ask, does anyone else have a conflict during that? So Counselor McCrory, I'd ask you to work with Mr. Selby and come up with a date, and then we could all vote on it. Is it the second meeting, next, meeting after next?
Just looking at the manager's outline, the incorporate second round of council input deadline is April 24th. Wouldn't that be?
I, I agree with you, but then, then he, then the manager comes back on May 1st with it, with the everything incorporated.
So ideally, we, ideally, we might have everything everyone wants in by the 1st anyway, ideally.
No. That, usually what happens is the manager's going to give us a proposed budget. And then we'll, we'll take it, analyze it, make our recommendations, give them back to the manager. And then what I think the mayor's talking about is we have a date that, that's talked about, it's voted, our recommendations are either voted into the proposed budget or voted out. There's a public hearing on it, June 5th. More deliberations done with public hearing, and then the final adoption's done on the 19th, so.
Oh, no, I understand that. I was just, I understand, I do know what usually happens.
I think the biggest thing is maybe that we got to wait for is the manager's proposed budget. Then we make our, we accept it, make our recommendations and go from there. But that's the date that I think everybody's going to have to come together.
Would it, would it work for May 15th for everyone to have, is the drop, I hate to call it a drop-dead date, but if, if we could have everyone's proposals in by then, that would give us just a little more room. Counselor, hopefully you'll be available.
Oh, I will be. Because the city manager, according to this, will have that on May 1st, his proposed budget.
Right, and then we will have two weeks to get our, our proposals.
And we'll be talking about it during the two weeks too.
Yeah, and then the 15th will be the last date. The meeting of the 15th will be the last date where proposals can be submitted.
Right.
Unless agreed to by a majority of council. Fair enough?
I agree. I just didn't want it to go to the night before the tax bills are due.
Absolutely, absolutely. Counselor Cuddy?
I also would, would like to request that this budget timeline be on the city budget central so that the, the public is aware of.
Right, and I'll update it reflecting this discussion.
Counselor Camardo, did that work with what you were thinking? Okay.
I think, like I said, is the biggest thing is, once Doug gives us his proposed budget, then everything starts to fall in place after that.
We don't know where we're working with actually, until we have it in front of us.
And I think what the manager is saying is, the more input he gets from us, the better his proposed budget will be.
And the sooner.
So I'm not going to wait until the 15th for, to give him any information. I'd like this, you know, to be a, a group effort.
Fair enough. Anything else, Counsel?
Do we have a request for executive session?
No.
No? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Bingo.
Counselor McCormick, second by Counselor Cuddy.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
For adjourn.